We did reduce the academy cost line item, a couple of dollars. So I'm not sure if you added that into your factored that number in.
Yeah, it's a negative $26,000.
Right, so that's what the difference is. You're also gonna have salary increases for staff, both in within the Ask Me and Teamster, so people are getting step raises, will still be getting their step raises. We have two offices that'll be receiving Quinn, will be Quinn eligible, so they'll be getting education, so that's also included in that 87, plus the Ask Me contract.
Does this, Chief, does this make any, this makes no assumption at all, I mean we're in the middle of contract negotiations, it makes no assumptions at all as to how that'll turn out? Okay, so basically holding those salaries at the level they are for, and the contract expired July 1st, 2017, 28th?
June 31st. Right, so that's as far as, you know, you can...
So the estimate, the extra in the permanent salaries, although you're taking down, you have an extra 87, the Quinn bill to people, is it just associates degrees or the higher for those two?
Well, if you go from associates to bachelors, it's 10%, and if you go from nothing to, what I believe is, I have one going from nothing to an associate, and one going from associate to bachelor's, which is both 10%.
Okay, and the administrative assistant, what's the jump in that?
All right, well, the jump in that is, we originally had put that in the budget in FY 2016, and it was in the dispatchers line item, so we pulled that out and identified it last year, but it was still at that FY 16 rate. We never increased it or adjusted it, so what you're looking at is the individual, the administrative assistant's been there 15 months, so what you're looking at is one step raise and one, two, three, four, five of COLA raises from the FY 16 budget. So it's FY 16 to FY 20 for that step.
It just brings it with the, up with the union contract.
Correct, that's all. It looks like a huge increase, but it's not really, it's artificial.
Cause it was never called for.
Right, we never hired it, we never did anything with it, and I neglected to adjust it yearly.
And there's a step there as well?
Yeah, she's been there 15 months.
And this, this does assume full implementation of the, I'm gonna say it wrong, the 4-3 plan?
The administrative assistant, that is...
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm backing off.
Oh, go back, okay, sorry.
The sal, the salary increase, this assumes implementation of the 4, is it 4-3 plan? What's the, what do we use it to describe that?
You could, we're, we're not gonna replace the first person, that would probably be the simplest way of putting it, but you have, you know, four people assigned to the road, and we're gonna replace that third person.
Okay, so 4, so all right, and this assumes full implementation of that, that's in your budget plan for '20, assuming you can get the people, assuming you can get the people?
Assuming no one leaves, uh, yes.
Okay.
We should have, you know, one officer who was away on deployment back in February, so that's also factored into this.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, how many, how many officers do we have in the military that is still serving?
We have...
Back, that could be called back to duty.
Two.
Two.
And the one that is currently working, just got paperwork to go for a month, starting in February, so...
One month?
Yes.
That's kinda, is that one month?
Required training above the two weeks.
Okay.
But usually that's prelude to something else, so, standby.
How do we stand as far as that filling the fourth slot across the board, as far as retirees, our active duty members?
Well, you have myself, that is eligible for retirement.
Right, now how do we stand outside of your position as far as the permanent positions go? How do we stand in filling that? Does it look good that we're gonna get to the four on the road for the next fiscal year? Or does it look shady that we might not implement the full effect of it? Or is there some, is there variables in there? Or does it look like right now we're good as far as cadets go?
As of right now, we look good.
Okay.
We have somebody coming back. However, how long have you been doing this?
Hmm.
Right?
Hmm, that's why I'm asking.
How many times have I come up here and said, "Hey, I think we're close," only to find out that someone retires, someone transfers, something happens? So as of right now, on paper, today, we look good.
Who will that leave you for part-time?
We will have one part-time officer. The problem with the part-time police officers is that one, the list has expired, there'll be a new list that'll be generated shortly. What I would caution you on is this, is that the full-time academies, the number of weeks in '22 will be reduced to 18, the, which will bring about 700 and something hours. The part-time hours have steadily gone up. They're approaching 500 hours, and that's without driver training and firearms. So when you throw in the driver training and firearms, you're almost to the 700 hours. So what I'm trying to tell you, I guess in the most direct way, is that part-timers are about to become extinct. So when we send someone to a part-time academy, we require them to pay their tuition, which is none, we don't reimburse them, their entire time that they're there, they do not get paid. So those are things that, you know, make people less likely...
Who would ever, who would ever do that? Well, I guess it's like getting an education, right? It's like, it's like going to school and getting an education, so...
It's harder and harder, but filling the police officer's position, it's a national problem, it's not, you know, unique to a town of a cushion it. If you read any newspaper articles or anything in regards to that, you can just Google it, and you'll find that there's a crisis right now trying to get police officers.
Sure.
Public safety's not as popular as it once was.
Okay.
Did you wanna go through any other stuff? I guess one of the highlight things that you may wanna consider is, I started working on some of the FY 21 budget, Ford has announced that the gas-powered motors for police interceptors, this'll be the last year, FY 21, it'll be all hybrids. So the impact to us will be about $7,500 per car on the initial purchase price, but we'll also gonna need to redo some of the equipment. We're gonna probably start doing some of that, we definitely are gonna start redoing that here in FY 20, however FY 21, there'll be an increase. We have contacted Green Communities representatives, and trying to see what we can do to 21, presently working on that, but I put in the packet estimates or quotes for both vehicles, so you should be able, if you go through it, you'll be able to see what I'm talking about with regards to that.
That's $7,500 for a vehicle or...
For a vehicle, yes.
$15,000.
Can you give me that?
It's still, it's still a gas model, right? It's just...
I don't have a hybrid, you have a packet?
I don't have a packet. Packet that he's talking about, I don't have.
No, I don't have it.
Might be in your bin.
I just, no, I saw it, I know I saw it.
Right, I put some information about, you know, they're, they're suggesting that it'll be about $3,500 per year savings in gas and that type of stuff, but it doesn't indicate whether it's, the vehicle's 24/7, or if it was scheduled, so...
How many vehicles is this assumed right here, the 91? Cause I know it'd cost just two, huh?
It's going up next year.
Well, we go two, and then one year we buy three, don't we?
Right, we, we're all caught up, we don't need the third one, that, you know, we'll be looking at that probably three more years out.
So this is only two, huh?
Yes, sir.
So how long have I been doing this? I remember when cruises cost about 32 grand?
Uh, I would say back to the Finance Committee days, we're talking about 23 per car when I, when I first done, so yeah, they've gone up.
Yeah, I remember when I was on the board, though, right around 32 is our average cost, it went to like 35 or 36, so...
Yeah, it's a...
It's getting up there now, we're at like 46.
Steady increase, absolutely, I know. That's purchasing off of the state bid list.
Yeah. Hey, we're going, questions all in all, the total budget went up about $100,000. So that's without any negotiations yet, huh?
Do you have one of the unions, we still have one more union to develop?
Salaries.
Yes, yeah. Everybody else out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief.
Good night, please.
Fire EMS budget.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, Miss Leonard.
There's one where the papers, yeah.
No, I've got, I've got his, I'm just looking at that, so I'm sorry, don't let me hold you up.
I'm sorry for the swapping out of documents. We've, we've been working on some revisions right up to a few minutes ago. Gentlemen, this is our first...
Our questions away, so...
This is our first combined fire and EMS budget. Prior to the submission of the fiscal year 20 budget proposal, we've been operating a standalone fire department budget, a standalone EMS department budget. Your direction to me was to work towards a complete and full merger of the two, and we're at the stage now where we're comfortable proposing for the first time a combined fire and EMS budget. The salaries require a little bit of an explanation. We are currently funded for four full-time slots on the EMS side of the house. We only have three full-time firefighters. We advertised first in-house, then we advertised outside, and we were not able to secure anyone for full-time employment at the current time, but that funding has been in the budget for that fourth slot, even though we've only been operating three. All of the full-time and call positions and part-time positions assume a 2% increase as a, as a placekeeper for whatever negotiations occur, and currently we're negotiating with the, with the firefighters and the full-time paramedics. Working towards that merger, in that complete unification of departments, the, as you know, public may not, that the, we were also working with two different unions. The EMTs have opted out of their union. The full-time EMTs have been accepted into the five full-time firefighters union. So for the full-timers, as of January 1st, the full-time staff is represented by the International Association of Firefighters. So those numbers assume a 2% increase depending on how negotiations go with Mr. Noble and Mr. Gas, we're sitting down with the representatives in the union this week. So we've also combined, you'll see in the salaries for full-time staff, that is assuming four full-time paramedic positions, and also four full-time firefighter positions. We, six years ago, we had a retirement, we had four full-time firefighters, we had a retirement, we opted at that time not to fill that spot, as our EMS needs increase and our interest in having a second ambulance partially staffed every day of the week. We thought it's prudent, and the time is now to, to bring that position back. We kept the funding for the last six years in the budget, but we've been allocating that to cover the increase in overtime, fulfilling that fourth slot, and also cover the increase in call salaries when the call firefighters cover that fourth slot. So this budget assumes four full-time positions, 2% increase across the board for the staff, and we're, we're not ready to hire quite yet. There is still some negotiating that needs to occur with the union, but we hope to have a pretty significant change in the way that we hire, ready for town meeting in, in the spring.
So Chief, just to be clear to everybody, just, that was a mouthful for everybody to digest. I'm, I'm very familiar with the situation as is members of the board, but for everybody at home in the Finance Committee, that budget, the fourth slot was always, we always had four firefighters, we just never filled it years ago, I think it was Mr. Robichard that retired.
Six fiscal years ago.
Correct.
We've had...
So there's no increase to the budget as far as our positioning, cause it's always been there?
Correct.
The EMS that we're talking about will be paid for from the EMS reserve receipt account?
In that, the funding for that slot has been in the budget for the last few years as well, we never took that out.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So the salary costs are all here, correct?
Plus the reserve.
Yes, but I'm just, so there are no, there are no salary costs that are not included here because they're funded from another source, I just wanna...
So the money that was in the fourth full-time firefighter item, line item, if you will, has been, like we said, stolen, and, not stolen, it's been re-appropriated to cover the expense of filling that slot.
Okay.
There is an increase fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20 is proposed for the full-time firefighters position with that 2% increase, a total of 6%, but that's because that position was stagnant.
And you've merged, you've gone back and merged the departments, I mean, this wasn't the actual budget in those prior years.
Correct.
You've merged it just to show you could do an apples-to-apples presentation and show the trend over time.
Exactly. So on overtime, on the firefighters overtime, you'll see that we left it, a 2% increase over last year of, it was 52 and change, it's now 54,000, no, I'm sorry, the firefighters, 35 or so, combined overtime for the two departments of 55,775. That's been inadequate on the fire side, and we've had to come to you for line item transfers at the end of the fiscal year. I took, in consultation with Ms. Hebert and Mr. Noble, kind of the conservative approach of letting that stand for this fiscal year. Obviously, when we get to hiring the fourth firefighter, the overtime costs will drop.
Right.
But as I said, there's still a couple of hurdles that need to be cleared in negotiation and town meeting before we get there. So if we get the authorization to hire the fourth soon into the fiscal year, that number should be good. If it takes us longer than that, obviously we're gonna need to cover overtime for that period of time. So we may be back, but I just wanted to kinda earmark that for you.
Oh, they, they work eight-hour shifts?
Who's that?
Full timers, or they 12...
10-hour days, 14-hour nights, so two 10-hour days followed by two 14-hour nights. The paramedics, the full-time paramedics work 24-hour shifts, and the part-time EMTs work eight-hour shifts. So there's three part-time eight-hour shifts per day, per 24-hour day.
You don't have the same person working a 24-hour shift?
The full-timer, yes.
How do you do that?
It's a, it's the industry norm.
They get to sleep some of the time.
They get the rest.
If you can, okay, all right.
Yeah, so, so the reason the full-time is a staff that 20, with the staff in that 24-hour shift, you have a new body coming in three times during that one 24-hour shift, so you have, you have somebody new coming in to the EMTs that's only working eight hours, so the part-time guy comes in, works eight hours, the next guy comes in, and it's just like a normal 24-hour shift, where you have three shifts, so you always have that new, fresh person coming in, and the other, the full-timer's doing the 24-hour.
And that's not gonna change.
So it's eight, 16, 24, basically.
And it is part of, it's part of the industry, I checked into that, cause I was a little concerned about the long...
I mean, I'm 12 hours into my day, and I, I don't know, okay.
Now, to be fair, Mr. Crowe's 24 hours on, two days off, 24 on, four off.
It's still a long day, it's a long day.
It can't be done.
And this budget only assumes that contract negotiations go okay in town meeting approval?
This budget assumes a 2% increase for fiscal year 20, that, again, that's just a place marker, and the town meeting approval of the contractual changes that come down the road.
Correct.
Yes.
And the, the 2% is, I mean, I don't know where you are in the negotiations, I mean, what you've offered or what they're asking for, but you're just saying there's going to be some increase, let's just throw that in there now.
Put it in there so...
Let's get some money, zero's not enough, 20% is too much.
Right.
Let's put a number in.
If there's any adjustment can be done at the fall town meeting, if there is a fall town meeting.
Yeah, well, hopefully it'll be done before, right?
We'll see.
So there's some minor increases, wherever there was a combined line item such as energy, the old EMS budget, the fire budget, I merged them into one, that's the number that you see. And then there were some standalone EMS line items that rolled into this combined budget as well. So there's relatively small increases to, to cover increase in call volume on the EMS side, more calls equal more supply that we're using. We have some additional call firefighters who'll be starting the academy in a couple of weeks, they're gonna need some equipment, pagers when they come out. And you'll also see a first timeline item for an assessment center. Again, without divulging negotiations that are ongoing, we, we may have the need to look at a non-civil service way of promoting among the full-time ranks. We also would use an assessment center for promotions within the call ranks. This is an outside vendor who's well-trained in coming in, administering a test, tabletop exercise, interviews, then they rank the candidates and submit them to the hiring authority for approval. So we're just, we're putting some funds in there as a, as a commitment to using that as a promotional process moving forward.
Chief, all, all in all said, great job. I know it's the first time the board's gonna be looking, board's looking at your combined budget, finally moving EMS fire to a combined one department, one union. We'll see how negotiations go, but as of right now, things are transitioning pretty well.
Very well.
Great job, I mean, overall, you're up like, what, $23,000 bucks total budget? That's, that's pretty, that's pretty damn good, in my opinion, so...
Thank you for that. We are as, the, the budget hopefully will be combined, the union for the full-time staff is combined. The hiring process, if you, if you remember, we have one body that's in civil service, one that is not, that's being positively discussed for possible changes. So once those items are taken care of, the, there's really no other issues to bring to you as far as a merging of the departments, I think we will be, we will be done. It's been some heavy lifting over the last six or seven years, but I think we're getting very, very close to the end.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Great job.
Thank you.
You should. This is the matter?
It's in those two pages.
Two pages. They're not new, right?
They haven't been replaced.
Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
You have, I believe in front of you, right, two budgets.
Yeah.
The first one is the one that I've been responsible for since I've been here, which I have listed here under tab number three. There's really very little change, if you look at the bottom line. I'm sorry, let's go to tab number 15, I'm sorry, I switched them.
For those of us with just two pieces of paper, which one's tab fifth? Oh, there we go.
Yeah, that's, that's the budget I, that I've been responsible for for years and years. You know, as we've moved forward, there are slight modifications that we've made to that, but the only real one that you'll see is that there is a 55% reduction in assistant plumbing and gas inspections, and I'd like to give that to my, my full-time gas inspector. He had a very busy year this year because of the installation of more and more generators, he's getting busier and busier. He's an excellent inspector, when we have people who don't pass, he sends it back in for reinspection fees, he provides all those reports as he always has, and if you notice, he's had almost no, no real increase in salary for quite a few years.
Explain that again, what, what does he cutting it by 500?
Yeah, the fourth item, line item down, is salaries, gas and plumbing inspection.
Okay.
You see, I've increased it from 9486 to 1056.
Okay.
It's a 6%, increase.
Yep.
And what I've done is I've taken the assistant gas inspector fee and taken it, taken the amount that I've increased his from that.
500.
And one of the main reasons being is because, is Ray really never uses the part-time, he always does all of his inspections. It's very infrequently, and I think the $400 cost is a real cost to cover those times when, you know, he is either at school, that's usually when he can't take it, presumably has classes or something to maintain the certification, so I think that's well worth, you know, seeing him get that additional money.
He's pretty punctual, too, I know he's...
He's very good. And he's a, he's a real gentleman.
Yeah.
So, does any, no other questions?
As far as clerical goes, we've been seeing 4%, it's supposed to be 2%, 2% is 4%, what's the 4%?
On the 4%...
Union?
Last year, we didn't have the contracts in place, so everyone in the, in the union was level funded, so for FY 19, you should have seen, ultimately, they got the 2%, but we didn't have it at the time of town meeting, so that's why you see 4% for '20.
There was a question last meeting, was that 4%?
Yeah, I think it was the end.
But, yeah, that was only for the union people.
Jan's a department, and so, we didn't, why, why didn't we fund the 2% for all the departments, like...
We did.
Why they look, why is department is looking at 4% in some of the...
I don't know if that one, I think we re-looked at that one, I'm not sure if that one was...
The DPWs?
Yeah.
Okay, it just gets confusing when you're seeing a 4%, you're supposed to be a 2%, then you see a 2%, and it's supposed to be a 4%, it's...
Yeah.
So I understand, I guess, the, the union personnel's kinda thing?
Yeah, it should only be for the union people, that you'll see 4%, or if it's a little higher because they had a step as well.
Correct, correct. And your salaries are because of the contract that the board voted?
Exactly, yeah. Next page?
Tap 3?
Yep, tab 3. The next page is a fairly major reduction in salaries and maintenance, which is representative of, you know, a third of the workforce really retired, so we're down 30%. We have one, one gentleman who left, two others, the young gentleman who came to us from Old Colony who are still with us, doing an excellent job, so that, that line item reflects that. That also reduces the stipend which was paid to the senior member, they won't get stipends till next year. Salaries temporary, that's a line item that we established last year in conjunction with DPW.
Definitely longevity, not stipends, right? Yeah, you don't, the other two guys don't get stipends.
I'm sorry, you're right, longevity, yeah. Yeah, the longevity is, is, yeah, is gone.
So the lot, the loss of the people you lost, it still works with the staffing you've got? Apparently, you're proposing it, but...
Yes, I'm very pleased with the amount of work that we're getting done. The two young men that we have work at it full steam, and, you know, I called them on Sunday, asked them, I says, "Listen, I'm worried about town hall, I gotta text back immediately, we'll take care of it." And they were down here, they shoveled everything out, they iced over everything, no one else was here, which I commend them for, I really do commend them for. I honestly believe had I not called them, they probably would've come anyways. I never see them sitting down, which I used to see before, they, I give them a day's worth of work, and they do it in the morning. I have nothing but good things to say about the two young men that we have.
Yeah, they're two good kids.
They're really good kids.
And we, we added a little temporary help, that's, I'm taking that.
That was in cooperation with the DPW, what, the ideal is... The ideal, as was to take a look at, you know, where our workforce could work best. And, you know, under Mr. Menard's guidance, they're doing a lot of work that we normally would have gone out to bid for just because of the experience and his expertise and having a good workforce. Having them sit on mowers didn't make any sense to me. So in talking with the town administrator, Don Anan, talking with Dan, we thought this would be a good alternative. So we were able to hire two people who worked out real well for us. They got everything cut on a regular basis. Now, one of the things I did do is I took some of the salary money from the first line item and I added some additional money to that line item, thinking that over the summer, when we have better weather, we'll still be able to maybe get one or two students from Old Colony or hire a temporary person to come in, work with the two young men that we have now to get additional work done under better weather.
So whether we spend it or not. It's, it's only an $8,000 increase, though.
Correct.
So is it to take, alleviate some of the pressure off DPW workers where they're, as you had noted, they cut the library lawn, they cut the pining ways lawn, and doing things of that nature, or we're wasting.
Exactly.
Salary, really, because they're getting paid a higher premium in their salary to sit on a lawnmower and, and take eight hours doing something like that when they should be doing much bigger projects.
Correct.
So, overall, it's gonna be a huge cost savings.
It is. And the amount of work that we have that we could attack, having one additional person for three or four summer months would be hugely advantageous for us, you know, in getting what we need to get done, completed over the year.
Correct. Thank you.
Moving down, like you say, there is no longevity. That's gone. The stipend was gone prior to. The energy consumption, we've monitored that. That has to do with our green communities. You can see from fiscal year '18 actuals, town meeting vote was for $40,000. I think this year, we can easily manage that for 35. And, you know, it's, it all goes back into free cash, whatever we don't spend. But we're looking at greater and greater savings each year as we move forward with green communities.
Jim, it's, that's due to the green communities is the insulation we did in pining ways while we're in there, furnace.
It's to do with everything, yeah. Most of the energy savings that we've actually achieved through green communities have been in lighting. Changing over to LED lighting is a huge savings. And one of the things that we're projecting here really is, is that we've, we've done that now in the new police station. So we're lighting in all town buildings now, except for some of the historical buildings, but we just can't do that. But we are in pining ways, we are here. We're moving forward next year with the next grand round to begin to do a number of those items that weren't covered in the schools. Hopefully, we'll begin to see big savings there as well. The other ones, of course, is that we've, you know, changed over our boilers to high-efficiency boilers. They're high-efficiency gas, the gas is less money, and they operate much more efficiently. So we're seeing those costs go down quite a bit. Also because of the insulation that we're doing in certain areas as part of green communities and part of our own workforce, we're greatly reducing, you know, those costs relative to energy, and this is helping us out. And, you know, we're eligible for an additional $250,000 a year. We're gonna try to grab for as much of it as we can every year. So every year, we're hoping to see those numbers continually go down. I don't know that we'll ever get to zero, but that would be my goal. You'll see an increase in repair and maintenance, buildings and grounds. Even though it's a 50% increase, I think we have to try to recognize that, you know, we do have. Usually I go over this with Lisa every time we get bills, and I'm always asking her, so where are we, where are we? It always seems like we never have enough. This is just money that we spend, you know, for, for paint, for.
Materials.
Materials and all these kinds of things that we're using our own workforce for. I'm sorry?
To repay the elevators.
To repair the elevators, like those kinds of things. Custodial services, that's, that's down. But in working with Lisa, Lisa said that's, that's closer to our actuals over the year. Postage and supplies, it seems like a lot of money, but that's every bit of postage they use. Why it's in my budget, I'm not sure, but it doesn't change.
For the whole town hall.
It's, yeah, it's for all the, all the tax bills that go out, all the mailings, everything that goes out. That's, and that's what it's been. If you go back historically, you can see, you know, that the postal rates never go down, so. Supplies, we've doubled that from 5,000 to 10,000. Again, it's only a $5,000 increase, but it's something that I, I really think that we need to take a look at as we do more and more repairs ourselves.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
So you go, buildings and grounds is a line item, and then you have supplies. Can those two line items just be merged into one line item? What's, what differentiates the two when you're, when you're paying bills? What do you say, oh, I'm gonna take that out of the supply line item, or I'm gonna take that out of buildings and grounds? Why can't they just be merged?
Well, I, I think they could be. In years prior to, you know, the previous town council really wanted everything broken down. Julie's not so much that way. If, if we have to move items on, on the same section as we need to, she lets us do that very nicely, and so, I mean, I'll, I'll leave that up to her and up to Brian if, if we wanted to simply add those.
Yeah, the other thing I'll add is that it's repair and maintenance for, for buildings and grounds, which is just a slight difference. Like, you know, you could buy a bunch of supplies that would go out of the supplies item. If you're doing repair work, if you have like a contractor in or something like that where it's for the repair and maintenance, that's where it would hit the other line item. So it's just a slight difference.
So if somebody comes and fixes boilers, that would be a serious.
Yeah, not a surprise.
Smelt that supplies.
Right.
But it's all.
If I buy a door, let's go back to that then. So if I buy a door,
Yep.
it comes out of repairs and maintenance because my door's smashed, right?
You, honestly, it's, it's a judgment call on that one. It could be a supply or repair and maintenance. But where, like that, if you had a contractor and you try to buy it out of the supplies line item, that's where it'd be like, right?
Are they really watching that? Everybody, every minute's $350,000? I know you do.
Well, you know.
They, they do. It's like all the projects that we've done at pining ways, that's a separate line item. So that comes out of CPC funds.
Oh, that's CPC, that's why.
Right, but everything like that type of thing, but like the door that we've replaced here in, in the selectman's office, that came off supplies.
I don't see a reason why they couldn't be merged. Because I, the thing you would look at is.
It's not a big deal.
You look at it from a comparison point. If I need to go back and research, what, what am I gonna need to distinguish between a repair and maintenance and a supply? It's all, it's a repair. Okay, so I don't have a problem. It's up to the town council. She likes it.
Supplies, we usually buy total paper and pay for towns.
Yeah, supplies is totally different, yeah.
Whatever.
The first to the manager.
It's only 10 grand. It's only 10 grand.
I don't want to get in trouble by saying it's only.
Well, it's, every next 10 grand, I mean, you're gonna merge it. It's still the same 10 grand when you merge it. It's still becoming the same 10 grand and just, you know. So if I need a door, I can buy it out of supplies. But if the repair man comes in, I can't pay him out of supplies. Got it. Thanks, Jim.
Any new questions?
Jim, can I, could, yeah, can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
So every year, we, we appropriate for town buildings, repairs and maintenance of buildings. Do we have any, any kind of plan for where this 30 grand's gonna go? Or is it just random in case when things happen? Or do we have a product?
It's pretty much right now random as things happen. It would be nice to establish a schedule. I did a number of years ago give a proposal to Mr. Cutino, and it was filed somewhere, but, I mean, there are items that we could do, other items that I don't think we can do.
That's fine.
One of the biggest concerns I have is this town hall roof. You know, it's, the roof is leaking over Julie's office. We've gone up a number of times to try to pass it, patch it. Nails are coming through the roof, and the roof is extremely brittle.
This side? Yeah, you should just do the back.
We did the back.
Yeah, so this side.
Yeah, but, you know, from the corner where the chimney is, the valley goes right up past it, and it splits right over Melissa's desk. And it's, it's the other side, it's the back side that's actually leaking. But there are items like that that we, I think we would be better to go out to bid for. But there's always items that come up.
Yeah.
That we need repair.
Yeah.
My workforce can take care of that. Some of the things might be too big, you know, for them to do, so.
Oh, you just, there's not enough time in the year.
Exactly.
If the roof's that patch, shouldn't we consider against the prices to, you know?
I think we should.
Against the prices to get. So, yeah, the capital planning, so we can, I mean, the roof is the main, it's the main part of the building. So? What's up?
Yeah, you put up the school.
I don't know what the gentleman may have next on your agenda, but.
What's that?
School, oh, what, what did you?
Oh, the schools are up.
School roof?
Yeah.
Well, did you have some? Why, did you have some?
Well, I, I was hoping to be able to talk to you briefly while I'm here about net metering credits that we've made an application for.
Oh, really? Do you guys have a few minutes?
Of course.
Okay.
You know, this is something that we were working on as part of the Energy Committee for a number of years. Recently, I was able to contact the company, ECA, which I think you have the information in your. They were very compatible with coming in and meeting with us, giving us a formal presentation at the table. We, we said, okay, make a presentation to us, tell us what the numbers are gonna be. They left, they came back two or three times to look at all of our electric bills going back a number of years. They sat down with Merrill Lee, opened over our Mass Energy Insight program, got all the information from the schools, from all, all 16 town buildings, put together the proposal that you have in front of you. And they've given us so far the contract for us to sign. We used to go to town meeting. We're having town council review that now. But if you notice, the net metering credits that we get the very first year would pay us back $46,000 off the total of our electric bill for all, all buildings. It's a 20-year contract, and over the 20 years, the savings is over a million dollars. So this is, I think, very promising. It's a good way for us to go. It's not, it's not an energy reduction item, but it's a cost savings item. And it's agreeing, I believe we do get some credit for it as far as because it's a renewable. And I strongly recommend that this is something that we do. In addition to the contract that they provided for us, they're also gonna write a warrant article for us to take to town meeting. And I'm hoping that, you know, we will have the board of selectmen support.
So I think that, you know, it's gonna hinge on town council's opinion on the contract, a little due diligence on the company itself. Perhaps the board members talking to some other communities they've been involved with, things of that nature. Maybe them coming in and giving the board a presentation for us, not only us, but the, the public.
And they're very willing to do that.
Yeah, so I think it, there's a few more steps that need to be taken before the board would, you know, kinda hammer the gauntlet, because it sounds good. In the presentation that we have, we see what the savings, what they're saying it is, but, you know, there's always those raised concerns, especially engaging with a company for 20 years.
Yeah.
There's some concerns, so I think we have to look at all of that, digest it. There's a lot of information in it. I'll be honest with you, you gave us several sheets of paper. I, I brushed through a lot of it, but not everything of it. Kinda waiting for town council.
Yeah, when they, when they did first come and meet with us, they gave us the name of some of the surrounding towns that they've contracted with. My son is, is one of the city engineers in Tonawaymouth, which was one of their companies. He gave me the name of the gentleman who they're handling there in town. I did contact him, had a good, long conversation with him. I can get you that name, too, if you'd like to sit down and talk with him. But he, his first reaction, because they've only been in it about six months, he says it's actually coming out a little better than what they originally projected. So I would hope the same thing.
I think that's part of our due diligence. So I get together with you, Jim, having some conversation with you, going back, digest the information, come up with more questions, how to get back to you or the company perhaps. So that when they come in with their presentations, we could all have, you know, questions to ask and put that all behind us and hopefully make a good decision for the residents of Acushnet.
And one of the things I haven't had a chance to actually talk to the school board about, but most of those savings, we go to the schools, so.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I read quickly the contract. I, I love the idea. I mean, it's us, it's us supporting a green energy project, project and benefiting. So I, I mean, there's work to be done, but I hope it works. I think this is nothing but positive in, in every, in every way, in every way.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just waiting for town council to. First step.
Yeah, I think this is, this is an effort for us to come to you before we come in, you know, to, so we tell you where we are, what we're looking at, why we're looking at it, and bring you along in the process as we go along in the process, not just coming in and say, here you go. So this is important for us to go through a process because, as Mr. Gasper said, it's a 20-year commitment plus a five-year option. We wanna make damn sure.
And this needs to be voted as well as town meeting.
Town meeting.
I think when we're sitting on town meeting floor and somebody gets to the podium, starts asking questions, as, as well-educated as you are, Mr. Merritt, I think it's important that the board have a somewhat education background to the, to the.
Yeah, we wanna be able to have the answers, you know what I mean?
So, and, and we'll be able to give the public some education prior to town meeting by having maybe a little presentation slideshow, whatever they wanna do, and show it so that they're already familiar and hopefully hold down those questions, you know, give a lot of answers to the public so that we're not spending an hour talking about net metering at town meeting, so.
And it can all go on the website.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, school roofs. The school will be looking to replace approximately 63,000 square feet of elementary school roof. This section is the original roof from approximately 1971. A roof conditions report was done by a consultant in December on both roofs. Only this 63,000 square feet was recommended to be replaced. The entire Ford middle school roof is from 2002, from the 2002 renovation. Other than regular maintenance, the Ford roof and the 2002 section of the elementary roof are in decent shape. The school is awaiting an estimate of how much the roof replacement of the old section at the elementary school will cost. And the estimate will also include designer fees.
I actually have that. I just received that prior to coming over today, so. And this might be helpful for what you were talking about for the town hall as well.
Kristen, can you, yes.
So they estimated, this, the company that did the roof condition study for is estimated between $17 and $19 per square foot. So about $1.2 million for this section of the school's roof, of the elementary school's roof. And then another $9,000 to $11,000 for design fees, help with the bidding process and contract administration.
That's $9,000 to $11,000 for the design fees for the elementary roof, Kristen?
Correct, correct.
In a rough estimate, we're talking 1.2?
For the, for the old section of the elementary school.
The problem section?
The problem section, correct. So what we're asking for you all to consider tonight is just to, so that we can file the statement of interest with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It requires a vote taken by the Board of Selectmen and also by the school committee just to say that you, you know, you're aware of the project, you agree with the project and some of the conditions. And the language that you have in your book is direct from what the MSBA requires. So it's really just the first step in applying for this process for, for funds from the Mass School Building Authority. And what that will do for us is it'll get us into the, the funding pipeline so that we can be eligible for any reimbursement and funding and grants from the Mass School Building Authority so that, that will pay for anywhere from a minimum of 31%, that's the baseline percentage, up until perhaps 50, 50% depending on some, some factors that are determined through the process by, by Mass General Law.
Old Colony just went through this not long ago?
I, I'm not sure.
A few years back? I'm telling you that they just went through this a few years ago. So I know I forgot what their promise, the promise was made to them, but it was kind of a false promise. Most things in government, that's usually how it works. But they still received a very substantial amount of grant money, so.
So the base reimbursement, like I said, is 31%. And then this is adjusted based on three socioeconomic factors, community income factor, community property wealth factor, and community poverty factor. The first two are determined by the Department of Revenue, and the third one is determined by the Department of Education through the free and reduced lunch. And then after that, you can apply for some incentive points. And some of the ones that we would be eligible for would be perhaps if we have high-efficiency green school programs, that's something, you know, I know we've done some things with, with Mr. Merritt and with doing some green projects, so that could possibly give us a few extra points. And also best practices for routine and capital maintenance, so.
Oh, we know, that's, we're, we're pretty good in that standing?
Well, we have undertaken some projects, so it depends on, you know, what they consider, so.
So they aim to admit that?
Possibly, yes. I mean, right now, this is just to submit an online form. It's very simple, asking for some data about the building, about renovations, maintenance, the age of the building that we've done. That gets us into the pipeline. It's reviewed by the MSBA. They have a filing period. It's due February 15th. It opened January 4th. So that's why we're coming to you now, just to say, you know, this, we need to have all this set by February 15th. We didn't wanna wait until, you know, your February meeting to, to talk about this in case there was any questions. Then after the filing period closes, the School Building Authority does a due diligence. So they'll review our documents and those of all, any other school districts that are applying for assistance. And it can be from roofs, boilers, other things, but we're looking for roof repair clearly. So they'll review it for completion and content. They may conduct a site visit, and that could take place sometime between March and April. And then they'll recommend our statement of interest or not for invitation into the accelerated repair program. That's what we're applying for. So at that point, they would present it to the Board of Directors, and then, then at that point, we would provoke to receive an invitation into the program. So again, this is just the preliminary formality required. So again, this is just the preliminary formality required just to at least get the process started. So it doesn't mean that we're going to be going out to bid for a new roof, you know, come July first, it's just doing what we need to do now to be prepared. We did have, as Mr. Chopper said, the roof condition study that was done about a month or so ago. And so what we, we had some good news, the, the newer sections of the roof are in pretty decent shape. Those aren't recommended other than for preventative and regular ongoing maintenance, but they did recommend replacing the older section. However, they did say because it had been maintained and received proper maintenance over the years that we could, if we, the, the exact wording was we could nurse it along for a few, a few more years, but with increasing costs. So for example, this year we spent about ten thousand of our fifty thousand dollar capital article that we had on some repairs. I believe last year we spent around ten thousand as well.
On this section that we're talking about?
Yes, correct.
So it does leak.
There are some leaks, last year the, the issue was where the old roof comes into the new roof, the expansion joint, that needed to be repaired there.
And Kristin, most important thing is to remember that we're replacing the elementary school roof, so it's not all school roofs. So we'll be back in a few years with the rest, so we're going to be sort of careful.
Well, the rest of it is still two thousand and one, right? Is that what you said, all the other roofs?
Correct, exactly. They were installed around two thousand and two. And one thing for this, for acceptance into this program, you can't submit a statement of interest for roofs that are less than twenty years old, so none of that would qualify and it won't qualify for a while.
It's just a couple of, when the school building committee way back when got seventy-nine percent reimbursement, so this has come, come down, but even that said, I remember at the time being thrilled that we had that roof that we didn't have to replace because, you know, eighteen years ago, whatever it works out to, that roof was in, was in good condition still, and now.
Right.
Eighteen years has passed, so we've, we've, we've got to deal with it at a lower rate, so.
Right, and there are.
Spend it now, spend it, or spend it before, spend it now, it's time.
The report did indicate that typically those roofs last from thirty to, thirty to forty years and we're going on forty-seven, so we're, we're doing pretty good.
I was just going to say, the roof, so the roof that we're doing now is like forty-five years old, forty-seven years old. I don't think that, I mean, he's bringing up a roof that's, Mr. Noble just brought up maybe a few more years, but I don't see that if one roof lasted us forty-something years and we're eighteen years into this new roof.
I hope it lasts forty years.
We hope it does.
I just wanted to make sure of this.
Right, right.
So right now, this, this process that needs to take place, right? And then how do we, how do we, how do we go for funding? Like, how, how are we going to do this? Because we have a lot of school debt right now we're still paying for, and that, and that school debt is, is due two thousand and twenty-five.
It's probably very little right now, right?
I think it's two, I think it's two thousand and twenty-five when I spoke with Julie about it, I think it was around that.
But, yeah, the balance is going to be nominal, I would.
Yeah, so there's, we have like a hundred thousand, we're going to call it roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year goes to this, for the build, the school building renovation. That's what it's listed for under the debt charge that I have?
Is it, that's not something that's on the school budget side, so.
So we're roughly around a hundred thousand dollars, it, it's just too bad, what I'm saying is it's kind of too bad that we weren't closer to two thousand and twenty-five?
Correct, right, right, I mean.
Because technically we should see a, a reduction in taxes because that should be coming off, okay?
It's a debt exclusion.
Because it's a debt exclusion, but my concern is financing this project. So Mr. Noble's talking right now, but he'll listen now.
I'm sorry.
We don't, we don't even, the problem right now is we don't, we don't even know what we have available to balance budgets. We're, we're going through budgets and it's kind of right now, I'm going to, I'm going to say it's a little willy-nilly because we don't even know what we have and where we're at and where we're going to come in. We still have to work in sync with the school department over their budget, plus all other budgets, and where we're going to be at deficit, you know, surplus still, what kind of free cash are we using to do all this stuff? So the last thing, I guess the moral of the story, Kristen, is, is you're absolutely right, in the, in the school building, the school committee is absolutely right, we need to finally do something at a forty-seven-year-old building roof.
It's coming, yeah, so this.
It's done.
So what we're asking you all tonight is to take that, to get the ball rolling, exactly, Mr. Chopper.
Right, but I'm saying as far as funding, would we, would this?
That allows us entry into the program.
It's not a commitment to any money, it's just a debt. Is the school department going to look for an article or anything this year as far as bonding goes to pay for a roof?
I think the only thing we probably be looking for is just for some maintenance. I don't think the timeline will match up. Because with what we have here, the process, like I said, they'll do the due diligence March or April, present it at their next vote, the, the board meeting, so now we're getting closer to town meeting. So to get something like that off the ground, I don't know, but I think right now, we just want to, this is important just to keep our options open so that we can do that, and certainly, you know, we're not, the school department can't go out to get a bond on our own, so that's something that we're going to be working with.
Right, but I'm just trying to gear ourselves out on, so that if we, if we are approved by the SBA for, for grants, I don't know if there's a timeframe on which we need to execute the plan now, so I'm just trying to figure out source of funding.
Sure.
If they say, well, how long is it good for? For nine months, or is it only good for six months? Because then you're going to have to do a special town meeting to make an appropriation, that's going to stink.
So some of the guidelines say that the district should have the ability to fund the design within nine months, so the design phase of it, okay? So that brings us to September two thousand and nineteen. And then the total, and the ability to fund the total project budget within eighteen months, so we're looking at a year.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Well, the nine months would be from your approval, so if that's in July, we're not going to.
Or, right, or probably from, probably from the initial submission of the statement of interest, so that's, you know, September, October.
You going to ask me the question, how to fund it?
Without a debt exclusion again.
I think you, let's say it's one point two million, okay? Let's say we get lucky and we get fifty percent, just for even math.
Yep.
So you're looking for six hundred thousand stabilization, bonding, or free cash, no debt exclusion.
Okay.
I'd like to do it under the levy.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like we might have a plan. Today.
No, it's.
There is a process, there is a process.
There is a process, and, and we, we have a lot of things answered now, we know what we're doing, we know what, how it's going to kind of go about.
And it's a very prescribed process too, so I'm certain as soon as we get into the pipeline, they will, they will guide us and assist us in what the process is. And it's probably very standard and specific.
But you ought to guarantee the thirty to fifty percent.
Yes, the base, if you're accepted into the program, right, so if they accept it because they may have, they may contingent on how many applications they have from other school districts, on the urgency and the need of some of those other projects. So maybe we don't get funded this go-around, but at least we're, we've got ourselves in, as they call it, the pipeline.
So then we spend twenty grand on patching again, we reapply, is that how it works? Because you have to reapply every time.
You have to reapply every year.
So then you reapply, we spend twenty, thirty grand patching up and doing a little bit better patching, all the what we're doing to try to alleviate the problem and kick the can down the road. But we've been kicking the can for a few years now. We've talked about this in the past, correct?
Those roofs don't hold anything.
So.
Those roofs don't hold anything, forty-seven years.
I know, that's what I'm trying to say, and I'm saying it's time that we need to address.
In the past few years, we have had increasing, increasing maintenance that we've had to do as a result of leaks, and those, no, they do, they do impact the school day, they do, they do disrupt the school day, so we don't want to, you know, keep on putting buckets on the floor and, and rerouting school traffic.
Jim, is that a grab?
If I could just add one thing.
Yes, built up asphalt.
It really does impact the inside of the building, so we have projects that we need to take care of on the inside of our building. But the priority, as we discussed in our capital improvement committee, is the, the roof and the outer shell of the building, let's get that secured so that we can look at some of these other projects that need to be done, but it doesn't make sense if the roof is going to continue to leak to look at projects.
Yeah, don't break the ceiling.
It doesn't make sense.
Chairman, your motion, word for, word for word is instructed.
Yes.
Resolved, the board of selectmen having convened in an open session on Tuesday, January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the board of selectmen of the town of Akushnet, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, for the Akushnet Elementary School located at eight hundred Middle Road, which describes and explains the deficiencies, we need some commas here, and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future priority five replacement of an approximate sixty-three thousand square foot section of the Akushnet Elementary School roof that requires increasing maintenance or repair leaks, semicolon, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding, funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Motion.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
No, you're welcome, no.
Pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
And then just for the record, you'll just need a certification of the city town clerk that the vote was taken to be able to submit and the date the vote was to be provided by Massachusetts.
You think the school committee's going to vote this through?
We'll see.
All right, thank you.
I don't see any reason why not to.
Thank you.
You can tell what time we get out, I'll talk to PM tonight or tomorrow morning. Sure, sure. We have until February fifteenth, so we have some time.
I don't want to be doing that before that.
Annual town meeting warrant opening. The schedule for the annual town meeting warrant was presented at a November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. The schedule for fourth opens the town meeting warrant on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, to start accepting articles, and will close on March fifth, to give enough time to hold hearings and bring the warrant to press. Is there any information, any discussion questions on that? Next, so on that credits, we did.
We're done?
County administrator's report.
Okay, so before you and your package is a rather confusing memorandum from the town of Freetown discussing the Freetown Screw property that exists on Accessors Mount One and a former owner that we can't find anymore, TADA Troy and Company. As you recall, at the town meeting last year, we transferred the right of foreclosure to the town of Freetown. It is a contaminated lot. The town of Freetown is, has never actually foreclosed on the property and is now in the process of negotiating with this Commonwealth of Massachusetts to extend their grant for cleanup of the property under a brownfield grant. They're informing us of what they're doing and giving us a, a history. We, this may be one of two things, either they will act as a, the tax-taking and therefore own the property, in other words, the town of Freetown would own property in the town of Akushnet, or it might require that the late state legislature redraw the town line by that one acre of land and, and cede the land to the town of Freetown, which would be fine with me because I never want to take possession of it, it being contaminated lot. Excuse me, and it adjoins a piece of property that the town of Freetown wants to build senior housing on, so we're certainly in favor of that. I think at this particular point, no vote is required, I just want to let you know what the status is. You know, either way they go, I, I don't think you have a difficulty with it, but you will be consulted before anything happens.
What a redraw. Extension of twenty-four month, extension is what they want.
So they agree.
We already took this, you know, I was potted out with Mr. Merritt, Mr. Catino and, right, Mr. Jim?
How much, it's less than an acre, man.
It's about an acre.
It's a pocket lawn.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's probably right around an acre.
Yeah, it's a piece of the.
My only concern is the impact it may have on the conservation land that we hold abiding to it.
Well, the advantage would be if they do the cleanup, if they're required under the brownfields, they do the cleanup on the lot of land, they have to accommodate the, the spillover, if you will, into the conservation land, and I have made sure that that's included in their brownfield grant, they have to clean up that too.